Well, we're called to order at 7:02.
So Jenny, you are taking care of minutes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Then let's uh. I can just do this really fast. All right, let's take a look at first of all, anyone from the public have any address to the oh, you know what? Before we get going, not say just lost your agenda. Before we get going, I would like to dedicate this meeting to Carol Stroh. She attended sixteen years of board meetings and who knows how many other board meetings. So in her honor, let's let's keep her in mind tonight. Um. So any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anyone?
Just just the just the executive session. I don't know that that says on the agenda that will.
Yeah. Session. It's only about.
Yeah, okay.
We'll we'll keep it there unless our conversation directs our attention to it. And then we can just I think we can agree to insert it anytime, but it's actually it's after director's comments.
Yeah.
And we've done that. Okay, so. Okay, so the opportunity for the public to address the board. Anyone have anything to say? And actually, I'm 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 not seeing. I just want to know who all was here. Anna, Jillian, Katie. Okay, there's.
And Eliza.
Yeah.
Is is Matt with us tonight? Not at this point.
Not currently.
So everybody but Matt in terms of trustees and then several staff. Thank you all for joining. Financial reports. Why don't we skip that until Eric gets back and go on to building and grounds committee? Which is number seven on the agenda. Is that all right with you Jenny to jump around? So I believe. Jenny, when you when you get a chance.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let's see, I guess. I'm trying to think when last time building and grounds met. I feel like I've been popping in here informally.
Well, we met and talked about furniture.
Right.
And then I looked over at minutes from two meetings. The other one had to do with a follow up on the visit with the museum folks, which I think will get you over and over again.
Right. So I I think that you know, I was in talking to Eric earlier today. And we were looking at the space and wondering if maybe we're we're gonna be looking at too much furniture. We thought it might be crowded, so.
You're talking about the Stro room or the?
Stro room, yes.
Okay.
And so now that now that the fireplace is roughed in and so forth, and all the carols and all other stuff are out of there, there's a big scaffold in there, but somehow I can feel the space better now than I did before. And I I'm thinking maybe Eric's right. So I was gonna go a couple doors down because Jeff Lawrence had told me several months ago that he'd be happy to come in and take a look at it and give us his
Yeah.
expert advice. And so I think we should do that because we may be able to order less furniture than what we thought. But that was not part of the meeting. This is just.
That's a good follow up. Yeah, I actually walked through it today as well and yesterday. And it looks great. I mean, the rough shop fireplace is in place. But I kind of agreed. I was sort of thinking maybe four chairs and one table or just kind of scaling it down. But we don't want to overdo it with furniture.
Right, exactly.
So I definitely agree with that. To everyone else, I think what we discussed was sort of finalizing pieces that fortunately we had met with Cal earlier and he really knew what she was interested in. And Eric is in the process of getting estimates from Megan. I don't know Megan's last name. Megan, who is the rep with the library furniture company that seems to have some pieces that we were looking interested in.
Rep line, yeah, I I don't have the minutes of that meeting with me, unfortunately, so.
I just glanced through them. And I followed up with Eric. He's he's waiting to hear from Megan. So I guess it's pretty much where we are with that.
Does one firm do all the signage for the library?
I'm sorry.
Does one firm do all the signage for the library? And we talked about where the signage is gonna go and help with the size of it's gonna be and all that.
Yeah, there's been discussion about the font and the sign and the color and all that. And I was all pretty much decided upon Jillian, do you remember the details of all that? The final decision?
Yeah. Um, future for the on the door specifically, that was gonna be Futura and white.
You know, a little louder, please.
Oh, I said the it's Futura is the font.
Okay.
And it's white.
It's white.
Yeah, that was her final decision.
Good, good. Yeah, so that's and the I believe Eric and I just question was, could we use the fonts and two and a half inches or three inches? And so I think we actually Eric would know. Question is, did we drop a name? Did we drop her initial? But Carol Stroh Carol Stroh was very important to her. Eric, how did we?
Was, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was really what I said.
The font size the same and keep the text the same and go from and to an amber sand.
That's right. That's right. And that would shrink it just enough to fit in with the, you know, the most visual largest visual that we can get along with. So.
Given given the choices, shrinking the font, breaking it up further or reducing Cal's name. We figured that would be the least objectionable.
Right. Yeah, I think she would.
I.
With that.
I one of my goals in life is is to not do anything that would cause Cal to haunt me.
It's a good goal.
She she would be an absolute terror as a ghost.
She would make good on any wishes. So good. So Eric, I just we just jumped ahead to building and grounds in your absence, but we can back it up. And we did. We agreed the agenda that if we needed to just break into executive session anyway, we could just go ahead and do that. So.
Yep. Um. Yeah. And for the additions and corrections, I did have two items that I wanted to get added to the agenda, the executive session, of course. But I also wanted to add in a an agenda item under new business to discuss what we could do as far as making a contribution to the funeral arrangements. That upcoming funeral for Cal.
Just July 2nd.
Is that second? I thought it was the first.
Was it the first I keep? Okay. You're right. I just Saint Mary's, they told me the second and then it was switched to the first. It's Friday, the first. My gosh, you said this next week. Yeah. Okay, yes, for sure. So why don't you just pick up wherever you want to and we'll move ahead.
Sounds good. So next item up is going to be taking a look at the minutes. Minutes of our June. Minutes of our June meeting. Trying to remember the exact date, the the May 17th, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting. So are there any questions, comments on the minutes? These were the handiwork of the always reliable Bonnie Shaw.
It looked good to me.
Do approve.
All right, motion from John. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Seconds.
I think Bill jumped in.
No.
Just by half a second.
Photo finish.
Right.
All in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you all. And that is going to take us into our financial reports. Which I am going to bring up on the screen here. So in a lot of ways, pretty standard May. May tends to be a big month for monthly expenditures because it's the first of the fiscal year. So we purposely load up a lot of our contracts to come due at that time. It's just easiest to pay them off at that point. I will call.
Could you enlarge this course, please? Could you enlarge this?
Better?
Yeah, great.
Okay. Um, so I will draw attention to a couple of points here. We do continue to do well with our passport fees into the new fiscal year. There is 2,595 in revenue that is logged for May. So as sometimes seems to be the case, there's a bit of ebb and flow with that as far as when things actually get deposited. But that's a good sign, particularly compared to where we had started out last May. So I think the takeaway there is that we are continuing where we picked off last fiscal year and should be able to have another strong year. Being able to have the really strong year of passport revenue that we had and make that repeatable is going to be a great good thing. And that's what we're on course for right now. Okay, so looking down towards some of the items down here. You know, building maintenance, computer services, contracts that are due, this one with HVAC maintenance, computer services is our CDI contract. You know, so first installments of things that we pay out at the beginning of the year. The 3824 reflects the newsletter printing going out. And as always in May, because we purposefully do not spend a lot of money in April. There's higher than typical expenses in our in our program line budgets and then in our books where we're playing catch up in the new fiscal year a little bit. So and then as always, the the big item in our in our main expenditures is the renewal of the library automation software that is Sierra. We are currently in year, I believe, eight of a 10 year contract with that. So that is going to be one that we'll want to plan to take a look at at some point here in the next year or so, so that we can plan whether we want to go into a new contractor, whether we want to put that out to bed.
Eric, just one of the line items just above that under the adult reference, even though it's the start of the starting May, what what year over year, is there something that we sign up for some more things or going from 7,600 to 2,400?
Well. Reference is going to be Anna. That's her budget line. So I will turn things over to to her to explicate that.
I believe the biggest chunk of that is our approximately $5,000 Ebsco package, which renews. I think it knew a little bit later, but they invoice us at the start of this year. The other big thing is we get invoiced for overdrive platform fees, which goes through e-reference, not ebooks. Ebooks is strictly the individual items we purchase, whereas the platform fees always go to e-reference. And that's I want to say that was close to 2,000 this year. It was actually less than last year. It's nice.
So it looks like I know it looks like the fight is the it's that $5,000 charge. It's the main difference between this year and last year and
Yeah.
It came in a little early. Yeah. Thank you.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Anna. And good question, Bill. Okay. So on the bottom line, then we are at so close to where we were last fiscal year in terms of the overall outcome that we came within $500 of what we expended last May. So that's unpredictable. We can be. So that is a way of saying that all is all as well with the state of the finances. We landed as we generally do for the month, exactly where we expect it to be. Any questions on the finances? And if not, I would look for a motion to approve them.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion from Bill, second from Bonnie. And because it is finances, we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
I.
Trustee Meyerhoff. Trustee Heinzelmann.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Church, okay. Getting in ahead of me there. Okay. All right, the financials are approved and we will head off to the checks. So a couple items to draw attention to in the check report. First, I'm going to draw attention to is the Chicago Sprinkler Company. That's one of our annual charges, not one of the larger ones, but did want to draw attention to it because it is still an important one. They turn on our outdoor sprinkler system. There is a similar charge at the end of the year where they come out and put it down, put it to bed for the winter. Both are important. One, to make sure that the landscaping that we have invested so much in and is now so so beautiful after I think about 10 years now under a sorrow's care. You know, continues to be well watered and stays green. And of course, if you don't put the sprinkler system to bed in the the fall, then you will not have a sprinkler system in the spring. So that's an important item there. Other ones that I wanted to draw attention to the libraries first. Not in a major charge, but that is a bill that always comes to at this time of the year. That's for the museum pass program. Which is continues to be a wonderful ongoing program where you can come into the library and pick up basically checkout and make use of a pass to get into an area library. Not all area library, every museum or zoo. Which are different than libraries, which I know. But it's a it is a great good deal and program that I've been delighted to see continue. One of the one of my favorite deals on that has been the pass to get into the Chicago Botanical Gardens. Usually depending on the year, it isn't straight up, you know, just go in with your car for free. Often it's just a discount, but it's a wonderful thing.
I believe it is now two free admission tickets since they started charging admission. So.
You know, I had seen that and I think it was previously just a discount on on a vehicle getting in. So this is a step up. Had been it when they first started it out that it was just free pass for one vehicle, which was amazing. Okay, so moving on from that. Stanley Steamer. We had our friends from Stanley Steamer out to do a deep clean, deep steam of all of our fabric furniture. So that has been quite quite an improvement for a lot of the pieces of furniture in the building. So probably not something that we're going to commit to doing every year going forward, but probably something to circle back around to and you know, every other year, every third year, think about having them out to to do that. So those are my notes as far as what I wanted to draw attention to in the checks. Any questions on any of those? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the checks.
I saw approved. I saw move.
Second. Second, I'm sorry.
All right, motion for Meyerhoff, second from John Heinzelmann. Again, we will do a voice vote dealing with cash. Trustee Heinzelmann.
I.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Hayes.
I.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Jenny.
I.
Jenny votes I. So the checks are approved. And then that is going to take us to committee room. And by the time of the the meeting today, we have managed to have a meeting of every committee other than the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee over the last month. So to start at the top, I believe we had gotten building and grounds rolling while I was resetting the air conditioning again. So is there any additional follow up on the? Oh, good. It's down to 66 degrees on the district. The AC is working.
Yeah, it's definitely getting warmer.
Yeah. Um, we're excited about this.
Yeah, I I had I had something real quick on building and grounds. Um, I know we met and we set goals and this is this is in regard to the the reading room. I know one of the last things I did was I for building grounds was I popped in and looked at the Cal approved upholstery and tabletop and everything. And I think Eric, you had sent a note saying that the the lead times were pretty significant for the furniture. Where do we need to meet as a committee to get that moving? Or I just I hate to see the room get finished and us waiting months for furniture to come in.
Short answer is yes.
Okay.
Jenny and I also did a walk around in the the room there earlier today and our discussion kind of turned towards whether or not the furniture that we had initially plotted out for that space might be more furniture than the space would comfortably comfortably accommodate. Something that I think is a lot easier to see and feel now that the room is making steps towards completion. You can kind of get a feel, you know, where the walls are going to be, where the the fireplace is going to be, how, you know, what the impact of the drywalling, I'm thinking things out of it is going to be. So I think we should set up a building and grounds committee and you know, ideally one here at the at the building if we can, so that we can kind of be in that space for at least a bit as as we're talking. And then, yeah, then in terms of once we've got it set in our minds as far as that we're certain the furniture we want to put in there, then we've got to get that order. In 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 terms of the timeline on that as well as the the cost. Regarding the the timeline, it is long on the furniture. What we are looking at is that while the space will likely have some furniture in it after the work on the furnishings is done, which will be about mid-July is when the last piece of the furnace should arrive furnace fireplace at the right, it's right, starting letter. So that should be done about mid-July and then it's going to be a little bit longer to get the furniture in there. But what we'll want to do anyway is try and set up a dedication ceremony. And mid-July wouldn't have worked well for that anyways, because our chief consideration is likely to be that we want to find a time that Stro family can join us. So I've put Julian in touch with Greg. And you know, we'll you know, follow through on that. We'll get that furniture ordered and then when it's here, we'll have a date set after the projected arrival time for a dedication ceremony with Stro family reps.
Excuse me, did you say that the fireplace will not be finished until the end of July? I wasn't sure if that's what you said.
Yeah.
Is there is a delay on the fireplace, some part of it?
There is a delay on one part of the fireplace, specifically the ventilator.
Hold up the tile installation and all of the finishing.
Um, it'll hold up a small portion of the finishing. So I I talked with Jason, who was out today doing an inspection on on some of the work and the way that the ventilator will go in is that they'll leave a hole in the right in the facing on the the main portion of it. And then they'll just be able to just kind of drop it in. I'm sure it's not that easy, but that was the metaphor that Jason used to me as some of that doesn't understand these things. But the the key takeaway from from you on that is the cabinetry is going on on both sides. Most of the facing around the fireplace is going to be going in. And they're going to get done everything that they possibly can and still be able to get that ventilator in place when it arrives. I think you said July 20th was the dating I cited today. I don't know why that particular piece is lagging so much, but.
That's kind of the story with every project nowadays. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the rest of the drywall and all of that.
Yeah.
Will be able to proceed even without that being done.
Yep. Drywalling will be going in next Wednesday.
Good.
And there will be some additional cabinetry work that will be happening on Friday.
Good.
So another another week or two, it should be a starting to look like a much more completed room.
Any idea when the door comes?
Um. The plan is to put the door in as the last thing.
Okay. Makes sense.
Yeah. You know, Jason figuring, of course, that if you put the door in last, then there's no chance that somebody accidentally drops something through it, or at least less chance.
I question. With regard and this jumping ahead a little bit, but with regard to the dedication. Have we thought about what? How do I say this? What role the friend's gift will play in that dedication?
Oh. That is a good question and one that we should take into consideration. Yeah, we will want to. We don't want to take any luster away from the the Stro family.
Right.
Communication that Cal made. But yeah, the there should be something that we'll want to put in place there.
Yeah, it's a bit of a finesse, I think. But yeah. I don't think we want to.
I have.
Yeah, anyway.
I think if we discuss that with Irene, she'll help us come up with it. She should certainly be included. And then and then there could be a follow up. Just, you know, open day when the friends are welcome to come and visit, but.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So you know, we had in terms of putting some of the furniture in there, we had been discussing with Cal that the possibility of that she might make another donation. She was very keen to see that space be a really really nice space and did not want to see us cut any corners on that. So as we move forward with the the furniture, I did also want to state that I I do think that we've got a lot of good options as far as you know, continuing to cover the cost of that.
Okay.
That we've kind of already started discussing and will continue to discuss the building and grounds committee.
Eric, you know, could you speak up, please?
Oh, yes.
Thanks, I better.
We've we've got some options as far as the 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 funding for that last bit of the room there, the the furnishings. We've just started discussing that with the building and grounds committee and will continue that.
Okay.
We have some new info to bring to the table on that.
Good. Well, then let's get a B and G because we've also got to talk about this stuff. So um, let's get that going as soon as possible.
You do have some new info?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. Fabulous.
All right. So building and grounds, I believe, are. So building and grounds, I believe our next one up is.
Campaign planning, yeah, how committee?
Campaign planning didn't meet though, being an ad hoc that just kind of meets ad hoc.
Yeah. Maybe I could just make a quick comment, there's nothing new, no, no developments. We're just in the B and G, we'll need, we've got feedback from Engrig Anderson on some, we had great ideas from tech and from the employee, from staff. And frankly, the best possible library step race that we could work on, so we got some numbers and we'll talk about those and then we'll talk about. I'm almost wishing we could combine B and G and fundraising to get together because we also have to come up with realistic fundraising goals. And those we have to remember have to be paired with, I think the primary goal, which is purchasing that building and getting the museum to you know, successfully make that transition.
Well, if you invite John, then you've got a joint committee.
Oh, is that a good or bad, that's, that's.
That's fine.
So we can do that, alright, well then John, you're invited. And we can actually trim the meeting, front loaded or back loaded to meet your schedule, John, if that's possible.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think we ought to just we, we have the goals of staff and committees, but we need to have real, realistic goals from fundraising as to what we should be going out after, so.
Yep, okay.
Get that set up quickly soon.
Okay, that's update from campaign planning. I believe next up alphabetically would be community engagement slash outreach. So Jenny, I believe you are the intrepid chair for that committee.
Yes, I, I'm the chair, but Jillian is the best, she's the one that's been doing all the work on this committee, so. Jillian, if there is anything that I missed in our report, please feel free to interrupt me at any time. Jenny, if I miss anything, please let me know. Um, we just met, I think it was yesterday. So when we had a great meeting, we discussed all that's been accomplished this year, there's been so many great events that the library has been a part of in the community and such as a wonderful life, the celebration at the park district, which they're going to be doing again this year, which was so wonderful, so. Um, we feel like we've made a lot of progress on a number of the goals that we set and I think that we're going to continue working on a number of the goals that we've already set. I think the only one that we talked about kind of moving away from was the virtual programming that Jillian, you know, and I think everyone agreed that people are looking for more in-person programming, so I think we're moving away from that, but Jillian has a whole list of events that are coming up and I think we wanted to talk about if there's a way that we could all participate in them. So the next event that we have coming up is the Fourth of July Parade, which is so exciting and Jillian has some amazing backpacks that where their library is going to be wearing in the parade, and so we'd love to invite everyone to be a part of it and to walk with us, I know that some of the people on our committee are planning on attending and so Jillian, I don't know if you want to share a little bit more about what your plans are for that day. Um.
I gave you co-host Jillian, if you want to, if you want to share the picture of the backpacks.
Oh gosh. Backpacks.
Um, that will take a minute to find Eric, because it's on Instagram.
Okay.
But uh, the parade, we're planning on meeting prior to the street shutting down at nine o'clock to offer some refreshments and just like breakfast type treats to volunteers and staff that are going to be joining us and we have brand new staff t-shirts and ones that we can lend out to volunteers as well to wear. And then the backpacks in which they were talking about is what they call explosion backpacks. Where it's these balloons that kind of jut out from. Uh, I guess it's actually all balloons essentially, you're wearing balloons and then the balloons just kind of come out from behind you and then having read above on like sticks in balloons and then our summer reading club theme is growing readers, so then it would also just be bugs and flowers to kind of coordinate with that, so if you give me one second, I can get to it pretty quickly.
Yeah, and Jillian and Eliza, you've done such an amazing job with outreach with the kids and stuff, the summer reading program, so wonderful, the new garden looks amazing.
That goes.
Yeah, I love all the different community connections you guys have made, they're so fun and the kids are really excited, so I think you're just doing a great job.
Thank you, it's been really nice, it draws a lot of people off the street essentially, we get a lot of comments with just people walking by not realizing that we had put it there and so it's really drawing really great interest for the library overall.
I think gardeners.com should give us a cut because everybody's asking about those hoops, have to be raising their sales for them.
Yes, I agree.
They look great.
Here we go, okay. And so we hired Holly Nagle to create these kind of backpack type things for us and then read and then yeah.
That is so cute, the kids will love it.
But I just wanted something fun because honestly, it's very stressful for people to walk in the parade, they're, you know, they're giving up their holiday and time with their family to basically help out the library, so I really just wanted something seriously fun for us to, to have at the parade, so.
You know, that's something I don't think I've ever seen before, anywhere, somebody walking with, with that kind of stuff, I, I think that'll get a lot of really positive attention.
Yes.
I, I hope so, I, I stock a lot of libraries on social media to see what other people are doing in general, so.
That's so. Do we, um, do we give out bookmarks as part of the parade, I know other um, I don't know what you call them, parade entrance distribute candy, I'm wondering if we have bookmarks we can distribute?
We have purchased candy, it's not a bad idea Bonnie, I will definitely keep it in consideration for probably next year. It's just, it's, it's two weeks away, I'm not sure if I could design something and get it shipped here in time for us to be able to hand something like that out.
Usually as a march of the parade moves, it's such a, such a clip that you kind of need something that you can kind of distribute at speed.
Right, that has a little weight to it or.
No, no throwing, gently hand.
I do like that idea though Bonnie.
The police department is very keen on the gently hand part, but the, the reality on the ground is that the challenges are a little different.
I have invited the friends to participate, I can also add in there that if Eileen wants to bring her bookmarks for the friends, that, that would be something they're welcome to do.
We've, we've often tried to do a mix. The, the candy, which you know, the kids are all excited about, but then kind of, you know, get some bookmarks and other library related paraphernalia in there too.
Oh, I love the.
Take a look at it.
I love the bookmarks you guys have in the children's department right now, the Phyllis Fox ones, I thought they turned.
They turned out great, yeah.
Yeah, they turned out really cute, we, I don't think we have parade quantities of those though, at this juncture.
We have a lot at our house right now.
I love the giant squid drawing that is on the cover this year.
Um. Let's see here. It's switch accounts, but that might take a second if you wanted to see that squid.
Oh yeah, and I think the one thing we talked about, one of our main goals is to continue building the volunteer program and talking about that.
Yes, yeah, we need a, we need infrastructure for a volunteer program outside of individual programs.
Yeah. So I think we had a lot of really good conversation as far as, you know, different types of volunteers and how we could set those up into a program, you know, right now we're geared very much towards finding folks that are going to volunteer regularly, like come in every Tuesday and show up some stuff. And that is still a process that can be substantially improved, but what we haven't really leaned in too much at all is what a lot of organizations will do is they'll have a list of event volunteers and then when, whenever they have particular events coming up or opportunities for people to be present, help out, then they'll send out you know, an updated newsletter and let people know like, you know, we're doing this block party thing, we could use three people, let us know if you would be interested in, in helping out with that. And that's something that we've never leaned into, but would I think really benefit from, we've been doing a growing number of these really incredible community engagement and outreach events partnerships. And we've, we've definitely for, for some of these felt the felt the pinch as, as far as having staff available when we needed them.
The Botanic Garden uses their Master Gardener Program to solicit volunteers and they set up a menu of events and most people have permanent assignments, but they, you can kind of pick and choose and then that's in a database and people are called on for, now those are also huge events, but so that people plan it and then they kind of seasonally know what they'd like to do and help out with and it's just, it's another way of doing it.
Yeah. So that's, that's in the works, I'm very grateful to Jillian for all the hard work that she does on that, as well as to Jenny for her you know, enthusiasm and commitment to really you know, getting behind the outreach and volunteer opportunities that we've got.
You're both amazing.
Well, and Eliza had the mystery reader program as well, that happened this past spring.
Well, I was also going to mention the, the newsletter, which is beautiful and thundery and absolutely chock full of stuff to do. So thank you all for participating and planning and suggesting and researching, I know it, this, this doesn't come easily. Also, it promotes the survey, so I hope everyone, the trustees and you know, if you maybe send a note to ten friends to please respond to surveys and try to get those survey numbers up, so. But thank you for this, it's great everybody.
Very good.
Can, can someone share how long is the survey open, it'll be open until, or are we going to leave it open until we reach a certain volume of responses?
I believe the intention was to have it open to the end of August.
Right.
End of August is what Martha said and I talked to her last week.
Thank you.
I mean theoretically, we could always close it early if we're just getting absolutely swamped with feedback, but that would be a new problem.
Yeah.
Usually we're, usually we're aiming, when we get to August to try and get that last twenty five, last fifty.
Surely we can incent people when they're in the library checking out a book.
I can start offering free arcs with a survey result. We've got a huge cart full of advanced reader copies, which are just kind of take one if you want, if you're participating in the summer reading club, but they aren't moving yet, so. That's an option.
I love, I love my books that I've gotten from that cart Anna, thank you so much, I got some really good ones.
Yes, a lot of popular twenty twenty one and twenty two titles on. We had a large donation from a friend of mine.
Very nice, thank you.
That's so nice.
Yeah, the, the arcs are the advanced reader copies, they're books that we get, copies of things that we get of titles before they're released as a library entity, we, we're not allowed to sell them, but you can give them away, which is generally what we do with all of them. Unless they're really cool and then sometimes we'll grab a couple of them for ourselves.
You know, if I could just actually.
Just mentioning, just drawing attention to that, because just wanted to be sure everybody knew what an arc was.
Um, I thought it was a little arc. Somebody just mentioned a donation for the books. What are we doing, and this is a big part of outreach, to recognize these small donations which are, are kind of coming at us, I know we some vendor from North Chicago or somewhere helped us with the vegetable garden, Da Vinci painting did some beautiful work in the, in the lower level. So we can't let these donors go unappreciated or unrecognized.
I should know this, do we have a, a section in the newsletter that recognizes gifts?
Yes, both Da Vinci painters and Davy Tree Expert are recognized, Davy Tree Expert I think was recognized multiple places because of their multiple donations, we've also made a point to thank Da Vinci on the website and on social media and I know we hit Davy on social media, Jill, have we hit the website with them yet?
Um, I believe that they're mentioned on the summer reading page.
Great, okay.
I wonder if we shouldn't have a separate place in here, because if, if I'm Da Vinci, I may not want to read the whole email, the whole newsletter, but I might be saying, I hope library is recognizing me for my donation, so you know, you have a sidebar here with trustees and foundation, blah, 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 maybe there could be a section where we automatically list and then within the narrative of the newsletter and website, you can explain what's going on, but we have to, I think we have to bend over backwards to recognize small and large donors and create long going relationships.
Couldn't agree more, I think, yeah, couldn't agree more.
And generally, that's what we try to do, we try not to miss any opportunity that we can find to publicly thank our very generous donors and we've certainly had some really generous folks that we've had a chance to work with here. With the, the newsletter, you know, sometimes the space considerations in there are a, a real, real challenge, so I don't know for certain that, that's one that we would be able to do, but you know, when we're working on the next permutation of the newsletter, we'll definitely keep that in mind as something that was discussed.
You know, the TV and the, we just have to get those names out, the whole point of these people making donations, sure they love the library, but they also want to get some business and we have to hopefully have that happen for them.
Right, right.
But yeah, like, like a donor slide on the, on the TV screen might be that, that I think is that should be, that, you know, that, that generally doesn't have the same space concerns, this is a physical print object.
I'm also thinking of a framed nicely font list quarterly, because we're going to have bookshelves in the Stro reading room, so that would be a nice display.
Yep.
This may not be the time for it, but I apologize, but it would be nice to have a permanent installation for the larger fundraising, like something that lists all the major donors versus having individual plaques around the library.
Absolutely, and that is certainly something that we need to address. Many of those plaques, nobody knows what they're there for, so we don't want that to continue to happen.
I think they have, those plaques have really gotten quite sophisticated, you can update them and change them and they look great and I mean, they're not they're not inexpensive, but you, they probably pay for themselves over time.
There's, the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff History Center has, they've done a spectacular job thanking their donors and I'd recommend anyone going over to their new space and seeing what they've done.
Good, great.
That's a beautiful wall of display they've got there.
It's just so prominent and it's right when you walk in, so.
No, I think that that will be one is the campaign and finance and building and grounds committees committed, continue to meet that will, we will continue to workshop that as far as how best to thank our donors.
Right.
Okay, I think that's the end of the campaign planning. So that would take us up to finance committee.
Okay. So we re- reviewed our goals for last year and updated things for twenty two, twenty three. As a, as a recap, one, one of our goals was to have an additional ten grand over and above the twenty that we budgeted going into the reserve. I think last time we talked, they, it, it was looking like it was going to be somewhere in the thirty to forty range. Eric, I don't know if you know what the final number is yet or not, if the village has contributed all they need to contribute.
Um, last I had looked, it hasn't been finalized yet, the number from the, the village. Yeah, it, it hasn't gotten more final.
Okay, but I think it's, it's going to be exceeding the, the, the ten grand that we identified in addition to the twenty that went over, so we're looking good on that. The, the second goal was working, you know, with the HR committee to review current salaries, looking at putting a plan in place. We, we still need to put more of a formal plan and that's identified in next year's goals that mid-year that we should have something in place so that we know what kind of ranges that we're looking at for salaries for the library staff, so that when it comes to the budgeting process. So that when it comes to the budgeting process uh at the uh end beginning of uh twenty twenty three, that we know what kind of numbers that we're looking at as opposed to um maybe um doing, trying to do that closer to when the budget needs to be approved. So that's a um that's kind of a continuation of that that goal. Then there was a capital expense plan just to identify what are the big uh ticket items. It sounds like the air conditioning unit is um is uh may may come in a little bit earlier. I don't know, depending on what what's going to happen this summer. But the in-house uh plans be created, but you we've got a more detailed plan coming from Enberg Anderson to identify what are the major projects, so that we can figure out on uh what we have in reserve as to what we're going to be looking at seeing uh coming down the pike. And then again, um working with the technology committee uh to to look at what additional funding sources that we can uh anticipate during our our tours of the local libraries. And uh we've got a whole slew of ideas uh to look at. And we'll have to look through uh this year prioritizing uh where those um uh goals should be. So we're going to continue to look at for twenty twenty three um to go over and above what is our twenty thousand budgeted number for uh reserve. And and working with the HR committee then on the uh salaries for the the uh staff with a goal to have that already in place um at the start of the budgeting process for next year. So uh I know Matt's not here. Kathy, was there anything else that you could think of that uh when we met that I may have missed?
Um. No, Eric, I'm blanking out. I I did the
No, I think I think that was pretty, I think Bill had all the the high points.
Right, might put down exploding backpacks on here. I don't know. That's pretty good. Pretty good idea for those did look impressive. Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Jillian first said that.
I'm glad they're just balloons, because otherwise I might have some safety questions. Okay, uh so that's finance. I believe that takes us up to HR.
Let's see. Um, so uh we met a few weeks ago and some of the, we talked about our goals for this year and some of them were to continue updating. We were looking to continue updating the review process, um not only our director um process, but also for employees too. And so we were talking about meeting with some other libraries, some other directors, just to see what how other libraries are doing that to make sure that we're in line with what other people are doing. Um also making sure we have updated job descriptions so that we have an idea of what um the staff are doing and um it helps us, I think, when we're doing reviews as well as if anyone should decide that to go somewhere else, then we have an idea. We have something written down of what some of their, what all their jobs were. So nothing gets lost between in those transitions. So um and then we also talked about updating the exit interview process. So those are the things that we're going to be doing. Bonnie and Janie, was there anything else that I missed?
Not that I remember.
Janie's notes were really great. So that's what I was reading from the notes.
Yeah, okay, HR and then that takes us up to long range planning.
Yeah, we met um couple, couple weeks ago, maybe forgetting the date, talked about updating the long reach plan and uh set a goal of meeting again towards the end of August, towards the end of the summer to take a look at that and and um see if we could start making some some um updates to the current, the current plan is how old is it? Is it four years?
Three.
Three years old. Okay, so start taking a look at how we might be able to update that and then so that would be just prior to the um end of the survey and then meet again when the survey's into integrates the results of the survey into the plan uh for presentation and approval after that by the by the board. I think that's it. Anything I'm missing or?
John, when is the end date of the current plan?
Um.
Is it twenty two or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was wondering about that. Is that a three year cycle typically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh I mean, one of one of the challenges is the current, the 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 current plan was formulated pre pandemic.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So a lot of the um you know, it it just didn't take into account all of the challenges and the changes that were attended to the the last couple of years.
Yeah. And is, as I know that the long range plan committee is is as well, I probably got a little bit over over focused on the the idea that we were at some point going to be transitioning to this post pandemic world. And that kind of slowed us down as far as really working with the plan as much as we perhaps could have. But we're towards the end of it now, so it's kind of water under the bridge. But Kathy, I interrupted you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we are, I mean, it's our, it's our three year plan or whatever. So it's, and the other one took three years to put together uh under the circumstances. And if there's goals that, you know, have been renewed because of the pandemic ebbing, i- it is perfectly reasonable to extend the timeframe and the planning. I mean, it's better to do the best possible up to date, realistic job than just to get it done. So
Yeah, yeah.
You should all agree that.
I think one of the other things that we we sort of discuss that could change the plan completely is obviously the building across the road and how that could change things um depending on on what happens there.
Right.
That would be if that would move forward, that would be a big uh sea change for a lot of goal sets.
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
And actually, maybe I should just address that. It's it's one big unknown, but we, the library has been gathering information, the museum has, I, well, actually, Janie might know more about this than I do, has been meeting with people. We had hoped, I think, all to meet mid-June. That didn't happen. And and really, the we had approached the library or the museum and said, you know, we've got some preliminary numbers you want to sit down. And they uh twice told us, you know, they until they had their numbers, they did not want to discuss it. And they would have to go to their board and get approval for pursuing the idea. So um I know, Janie, you and Eric have been talking more recently about that, but that's, that is the last kind of solid communication we've had.
Well, I can, I can tell you um that I just found out today that that they had put it off until after the beginning of July. I I didn't realize that that had happened. And I can also just clarify.
Oh, so they're not discussing tomorrow?
No, they, with us.
Oh, with us.
Okay, I know. Yeah, a joint, a joint discussing, but yeah, there's, there's a um a board meeting of the museum tomorrow evening. Um where that's pretty much the only thing on the agenda to talk about uh possible acquisition of the PNC Bank Building. Um also, I wanted to clarify that I I've been asked only one time by one or two people. I I can't remember the exact circumstances about what if I had any guesses as to what the library might uh be able to contribute to that. And I didn't really give a solid answer. Um Kathy O may have been the only person or there may have been one other person. I I I've talked to all those folks so many times about some things recently that all kind of blends together, but
It's a question I've had several times from Kathy McCaffrey and Kathy O'Hara.
Okay, well, they, it's not like they've been trying to pry any information on me. So I I I wanted to make sure.
Well, I just want to make sure if it's coming from them, that's they were Kathy O'Hara was very specific about keeping this to a very, very small group that was the walk through group at the cross
Exactly, right.
In back in that one May. So and I am respectful of that, so as not to rip, you know, ruffle any feathers. I would gladly have you part of this group, but um and also, you know, too many people saying what she said, he said, whatever. It's um, you know, I I don't know what they found. And I don't know if they're encouraged or discouraged, but you know, I
Probably a lot better after tomorrow night's meeting.
Yeah.
Better sense of that.
If it comes out, we would be very happy to sit down and start talking again. You know, we've all got, yeah, we need to meet with, and this is not going to, this is a very fluid situation. There's not going to be any definite answer about anything, but I know I really want to know if they're interested in pursuing. That's the main question.
The, and I I think that is the question.
Yeah.
Janie and I were discussing right now, uh because I I think right now, and in terms of anything that we're encountering in terms of the cost over there, it would have to be, I think, truly monumental uh for this not to be something that would be really appealing to the community.
Well, I know, but I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about the museum making the decision. I don't know what's
That's the challenge is, I'm I'm hoping that they won't be.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, we all know from working with these contractors and architect, you get a big number thrown at you. It's a little daunting. And then don't forget that's on top of buying a building. So, yeah.
I want everybody to be assured that, you know, wh- when I was asked this direct question about what the library might willing to contribute, I I said to Kathy, you know, as well as anybody, what our budget is.
Yeah, yeah.
Know how how tightly we, you know, we we cleave to that budget and we don't put a lot in in reserves. And so I said, I I really couldn't even give you a figure.
Yeah.
But I I, you know, I have no no thoughts of going behind anybody's back and doing any dealings under the table. So I want you guys to be
No, Janie, I never suggested.
Okay, no, I I I just want to make sure you guys put that out there. I probably tell you guys more about what they're doing than the other way around, but
No, only only thing I think that you could add to that would be that, you know, our our finance committee met and met and discussed and you know, we are, you know, very much committed to this, you know, libraries finances are you know, limited, but that we are have discussed and are committed to making a meaningful
Right, but I I did look at the minutes of finance, I actually wrote, I read them.
That's, you know.
And it did say
Don't get into details.
Conversation about a contribution would have to, we felt it had to be approved by John and Melissa first, because it has to be realistic and attainable. So um so we can't just put enough, I I don't want to put a number on the table and then have to retract it or
Yeah, exactly. No, and we didn't, even with the finance discussion, we just discussed the library's ability.
Yes.
And what that ability might be.
Yeah.
We didn't put any numbers down. Um and I don't, nor do I think that we should. That's that's
And if you guys are okay with that, I can certainly share that that we're we're looking at it and the, you know, that has been a a topic that the finance committee has discussed and and just say that, you know, we are, we are very much committed
Yeah.
To Very enthusiastically committed, yeah, to do whatever has to be done, but there's a lot of talking to have.
If we'll back this financially, we'll back it financially.
Yeah, yeah.
Is what it comes down to. Yeah. We don't have four million dollars in the bank.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice?
We, you know, but but we'll back it within our means. That would be nice. Would be really nice. Yeah. Okay. Um. Where did that lead us? I think that's I think that took us through long range planning, which would take us up to technology. And technology would be Matt, who isn't with us tonight. Bill, Bonnie, do you have any uh anything you wanted to jump in on? Uh I can jump in and contribute.
Well, I I'm pulling up kind of what our goals were last year. We um we were very successful in in doing the uh area visits with all the libraries. And uh I think that was um very well um attended by the library staff and and the board with going to see all these different libraries, get some ideas of what people are doing, what technologies out there. And you know, from that generated a a list of 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 different things and and which ones that that we can kind of tackle um as a as a library, uh given, you know, given our size and and operating budget. The, there was an idea to create a technology plan for for new tech opportunities um so that that was one that didn't get done, uh but but probably as we went through the results of the 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 library visits, we've we've probably got an idea from our last meeting of of again, a hit list of all the things that we would like to accomplish uh going forward. The wifi system um was um uh looking at upgrades to that. Did the options proposed by CBI, they need to be reviewed. And that then would continue on to a goal for next year where we would be up looking at upgrading the the wifi at the library. The uh we also looked doing our own digital tutorials. Uh and what the staff found was that there's the, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there already and um, you know, just a decision was made to rely on the tutorials provided by uh by the vendors. So uh going into next year, um the wifi system and recommended time and replacement um uh during the course of twenty twenty three. Uh continuation with the technology plan as a guide evaluation for some new opportunities. And uh any other action items uh from uh some of the visits and follow ups uh that that were underway. And again, you know, following up from the conversation we just had, if um if things were to change with the museum, obviously, there there's, you know, some of these will get expanded uh faster than others. So those kind of were the the notes that were on the report. Bonnie, can you uh any other ones that you can think of that came up?
Uh, your summary was excellent. One very small add, just that based on the community survey, you know, we've kind of left room for if we get any feedback through that, we would address it, uh you know, any technology feedback. So both on the tech visits from last fiscal year as well as the community survey.
Right.
Okay. Good deal. Uh I think that pretty well takes us through the committee reports, you know, which are always long for our first set of meetings for the year. Uh Intergovernmental Agreement Committee has not yet met. That's been a an intentionally delayed uh meeting because we've got a a lot of ongoing conversation uh between the the library and the museum centered on the building, uh the PNC Bank Building. So the the decision was made that you know, with with all of that happening at the moment, that it would be better to defer that until a later point, once that's resolved. So um having gone through all the committees, uh that will take us then to new business. So the uh one item that was already on the agenda was the Vote Lake Bluff document. Uh this was a request that was sent to us by Jill Rosa of the Vote LB Committee. And um as they begin their um work as the local caucus, uh helping to find candidates to run for various positions uh that are open, they uh asked us to, Al Spain, Kathy and I, if if we could pull together a document that listed some of the challenges that the library is and projects the library is working on right now. The the result, uh you know, that conversation was that I uh put together a summary document, uh which I included in the packet this evening to give everybody a chance to take a look and suggest any additions uh or changes that they might think appropriate. So the items that I had uh particular particularly highlighted were space. Not just uh growing the space, but making the space more flexible uh to do what we needed to do uh and to do the things that we don't even know yet. and to do the things that we don't even know yet that we needed to do. Funding that library services have really expanded and diversified in the past 20 years. And that as a result, there's, you know, a funding challenge there in place to keep up with the geometric increase in what libraries have been doing and kind of dovetailing with that staff retention. Expanded services really require expanded skillsets. Libraries are a lot more now in competition with other entities for really well qualified people. And that, you know, staff retention and staff retention framework and goals is a new and growing territory for us. And of course, changing technologies and how they continue to change how we provide service and how we add to what we offer the community. So those are the ones that I highlighted. Are there anyone, any that you would suggest a change to, any that you would add? It doesn't, this doesn't require a vote. It's just an opportunity for, I should mention.
I, I think it looks good, Eric.
The other thing I would, you could do it in one sentence. It's just that somewhere that the library is, you know, it is dedicated to providing outstanding service and attention to our patrons. I mean, that's first thing everybody always says is, oh, your staff is so great. So we want to make sure that people interested in the library board know that that's a special goal of ours. So I had that, but that first paragraph, you can easily put that in there. I think this is very well done.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I agree. Good job, Eric.
Thank you. Okay, then that'll take us to the item, a new business that that I had added, which was, I think it would be a, a nice gesture if we could from the library, the board and the staff get a floral arrangement, preferably something purple, purple having been Carol's favorite color or, for the funeral. So I took a look around the cost for a funeral arrangement from someplace like Lake Forest Floral looks to be in the neighborhood of about 250. I, I think if we take up a donation from the board and from the staff and with a suggested $15 or $20 donation, that we should be able to hit that without too much trouble.
Okay. That's a good idea. Do you know, I, I still haven't seen the obituaries. The, is it, is the memorial or is the, is it at the parish center and then church or is it all at the church? I, I wasn't quite sure.
Let me look that up.
I thought it was the church.
I did too.
The visitation is Church of St. Mary from 10 to 11. And then it's not on her obituary. What comes after that that Eric had sent us?
Thank you.
That's, that's. There's a funeral mass on Friday at 11:00. So visitation at 10, funeral mass at 11:00. And then and then, and where's the?
Interment is at Fort Sheridan.
Why am I not seeing, interment at Fort Sheridan National Cemetery? Oh, I thought we had a time for that.
What did you say?
I thought that listed a time for interment, but there isn't one listed in the obituary that I'm looking at. Maybe it'll just be a drive over.
Sometimes that, yeah, but also sometimes it's found the only that.
That's true. Yep. The I am looking forward to the the pictures at the, at the funeral because some of the pictures that family was sharing of Cal that they were sharing with amongst the group on the caring blog that Greg and Mark had shut, set up were kind of wild. So Cal attempting to race lawnmowers you know, for a variety of silly wine related pictures. So it was, it was all very Cal.
When I was younger, yeah.
Okay, I will send out a follow-up email then as far as getting that money together. In part because I have never previously set up one of the virtual donation systems or bringing them. So hopefully Anne and Julian could maybe steer me in the right direction on that one. So that people can make donations as they choose with the minimal amount of fuss. All right. So that is that. I think as far as old business, we had already covered really digging into everything there and on the, the current state of the campaign plan. That'll take us up to director's reports. Only item that I will highlight director's report wise is that in May that our usage statistics were higher than in both 2021 and 2019. So we're doing, we're doing good. You know, plenty of folks coming in to, to see the library, not exactly in the same ways that they were necessarily using the library in the before times, but the usage is definitely there and real, which is great to see. And thanks to Anne as always for assembling those statistics. Okay, I think that then takes us up to the executive session. So for that, to go to executive session, we will need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees of the public body in compliance with the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 dash 2 C1.
I still moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, board has entered executive session. Staff that are present, thank you for being with us tonight. You are now free to continue with your evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Correct.
We've just left executive session. So yeah, so then we'll need a separate motion to adjourn the meeting as a whole.
So, yeah, I'm motioned.
I haven't got anything else. And we're going to have another meeting.
All right. So I'm sorry. Did somebody move in second?
John motioned.
I seconded.
Did you second? Both second. All in favor?
I.
Have a good and hopefully cool evening.
Thank you. Everybody take care.
Okay, thank you.
Stay cool, everyone.